We get started early tonight. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance is to the side. I am in the United States of America. This is a republic, our justice stands. One nation under God. And neither is law, and everything is just as for all.
Thank you. I am calling to order, by the way, the Planning Commission's Assistant Advisory Committee for a special meeting on Monday, June 28th, 2021. So would you please give the roll call?
Commissioner Ken Waldner?
Here.
Commissioner Ellis?
Here.
Commissioner Plank?
Here.
Commissioner Kadula?
Here.
Commissioner Schraven?
Here.
And Commissioner Chambers is absent, and Chair Barker?
Here.
Do I have a motion for the, or excusing Marty Chambers from tonight's meeting?
Yes.
And second?
The second.
All in favor, please say aye. Marty is excused then. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I'll make the motion first.
And second?
I'd second.
And discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda then, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda stays approved. Is there any public comment and communication on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will go ahead then. There is no old business, and our new business is a public hearing for Culvers, 1279 West Main Street, Special Land Use and Site Plan Review. And as our usual way we handle this is, we like to ask the applicant to come up, and, you know, just in five minutes, tell us basically what you want to do. I mean, what your intent is and what you want to do. So, is Gary here, or?
I am.
Please come on up, just give us your name and address.
Absolutely. Steve Stubbman, 1864 Conlon Avenue in Grand Rapids. And I've been the owner-operator of the Culvers Restaurant located on 28th Street in Cascade for the last 16 years. And tonight, I'm here with my business partner, Gary Pullman, and Wentworth Managers and Lowell resident, Parry K. Clay. And we're hoping to be here tonight to ask for approval on our site plan for a new Culvers that we would like to bring into the community of Lowell. We appreciate you guys taking this time tonight. I know it's not a scheduled meeting, and so this is an extra time for you. And we wanted to get this on the schedule so that we could hopefully start our process moving forward. If you're not aware of what Culvers is, we are a family restaurant with drive-through and sit-down, no alcohol served. We're known for our fresh frozen custard and fresh butter burgers. And it's been around for over 35 years. Started in Wisconsin, a small town, smaller than Lowell. And it's making its way across the country. We have over 800 restaurants, but each restaurant is individually owned and operated. So as the owner of this restaurant, I am involved in the restaurant every day. I'm involved with the team members and the community. I play a role with the schools and fundraising and/or with the churches or other nonprofit organizations. We see Lowell as a great community to extend our hospitality that Culvers is known for. We see a great opportunity with the community in terms of the growth. And we already get many guests that come to my Cascade location from Lowell. And we've got about four or five employees that work at our restaurant already from Lowell. So we see, again, we see a great fit for Culvers and Lowell. We plan on hiring, once we open, if we open, 60 to 70 employees at a very aggressive wage, more than what you're seeing on the windows along Main Street now. Because we value our people. Not only value them from the perspective of a monetary wage, but again, as a, as an aggressive and active operator in my business, I want to make sure my team members are taken care of there. I know it's cliche saying we treat them like family, but we really do. Brittany's been working with us for, I believe, 11 years. Her sister's been working with us for over 13 years. I still have a day one person that's been with us for the last 16 years. We think we do it right, and we think Lowell will be a good fit for us if you approve us tonight.
Thank you, Steve. Gary, do you want to say anything, or not?
I think Steve's pretty much wrapped up kind of what we're doing, so.
Okay, thank you. And we'll probably ask questions of you as we go along. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open it up as a public hearing because otherwise I may forget to do so. And Commissioners, please remind me to close it as we go along here. Having said all of that, Andy, you want to start and go through it with us?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as the applicant mentioned, the property is at 1279 West Main Street, Culvers Restaurant. I think everyone is probably familiar with it, but it's a kind of a hybrid fast food, sit-down restaurant. They are proposing on the, what's a vacant property at the northeast corner of Main Street and Church. So this is right next door to where Jimmy John's was that was approved by the Planning Commission maybe two months ago. So there's a, there's a large undeveloped site there. I'm sure you all know exactly what I'm talking about. It's like the only one left in that part of town. And so this site would take up 1.2 acres as Zone C3, which is the general business district. The building itself would be about 4,360 square feet. And then, you know, there's associated parking, landscaping, drive-through facilities, et cetera, on the property. The applicant has submitted a site plan and special land use application. The reason why it's a special land use is because there are drive-through facilities associated with it. It is just a restaurant with no drive-through, would be permitted by right, like with Jimmy John's and some of the others, when there's a fast food component to it or a drive-through component, who actually say that turns it into a special land use under the zoning ordinance. The site plan that was submitted was complete, so we appreciate that. Generally speaking, just to walk through some of the site plan comments quickly here, I have some notes here on just making a distinction as to what's the, the front yard versus the side yard because it's on a corner lot. The building meets all the setback requirements. They exceed the landscaping requirements by three trees and more than 30 shrubs, which is good to see there. Similarly, for parking areas that contain more than 20 spaces, the zoning ordinance requires interior parking lot landscaping with a ratio of one landscape island per 20 spaces. When we talk about islands, you know, historically, we've also included some of the peninsula and things like that that are located around the perimeter of the lot. They've proposed four of those as well. As far as site lighting is concerned, we spent quite a bit of time talking about that a couple weeks ago with respect to a different application. They have included dry sheets with an application that show an LED light picture that is fully cut off, downward facing, within maximum pole height of 20 feet, which is what's required by the zoning ordinance. It looks like there's a couple spots on the site plan where they might exceed that 0.5 foot candles onto adjoining private property. So the only area where that happens though is next to the Jimmy John's. I don't have any major concerns. Typically, if that's adjacent to another similar use, I don't, that's not a big concern for me. But if it's adjacent to a residence, for example, that's where we would look for some adjustments. They have sufficient parking. Actually, they have a lot more parking than they need. So the zoning ordinance requires 44 spaces. They have proposed 73. And so one item I think for the Planning Commission to discuss before we get into the standards, Mr. Chairman, would be talking about the increase or decrease in parking requirements. So usually, most of the applicants come in pretty close to what the standard is, get or take a couple, and the ordinance allows for that deviation. In this case, they're, you know, almost 30 spaces above their requirement. And so in the interest of seeing as little unnecessary impervious service as possible, we'd like to see some sort of proof from the applicant that really justifies the need for that many parking spaces. So if that's something that they have, that would be helpful, I think, for the Planning Commission in making that, that decision. Site plan showed that a sign was proposed using on the southeast corner of the lot. Details were not submitted, however, you know, any sign that is included as part of a site plan like this comes through staff after the fact anyway, so that'll just come through my office as a staff review. And the general site development requires, requirements of Section 12.04 were also satisfied. So do you want me to keep going through the standards, or do you want me to stop for a minute and talk about parking?
Let's, let's stop and talk about the parking. I guess I have a question. It's on the, what's that, the north side, I guess? Where there's parking that seeps into the, the lot. And how many spaces is that?
There's 12, it looks like, spaces up there that would be partially on the adjoining property to the north, which they control right now is my understanding. So this shows an easement that would be granted to have those plenty of spaces there.
But that's also facing the houses on Sibley Street, correct?
Yeah, there would be a separation between the houses on Sibley and, and that spot itself by about 30 feet.
A little over 90 feet.
90, yeah, okay, that's what you'd say a bit more. So yeah, it's about 90 feet from those, from those properties to the north. But to answer your question, yes, it would be, it would be pulling in there, the headlights, everything would be faced home. That direction granted it'd be.
The sun, but then all of that. I guess my thinking is, is that if the applicant does not need those 12, if he can't demonstrate a real need, I would like to see either a, probably a privacy fence there. And that would cut down on the noise, cut down on the number of parking spots, bring it back within some, closer to the standards.
Yeah, the other thing that could be done there is it could be deferred, so they could still be shown on the site plan, but they would be, you know, constructed at a later date. You know, if in the event that they, you know, demonstrate to, to the city that, hey, this is the, what did I say it was, 77 or whatever it was, minus 12. So if these 65 spaces just aren't, aren't public, then they could build those at a later date, and that option in the zoning ordinance as well.
73.
73, so yeah, take away 12, so you'd get 61.
And the 44 that they are saying here are required, or the 44 that are required, those do not include spaces where people are standing in line, right in the line?
Correct. Those are actual parking spots. Correct.
Do they include the ADA? I assume they do. Okay. Commissioners, any other thoughts on it?
Can we hear why their thoughts?
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, my name is Matt Cole. I'm the engineer for the project. And this is probably maybe the ninth Culvers that I've done. And lots of times we get this question about why do we need more parking than the ordinance than a McDonald's or Burger King? So the difference with Culvers is we have a higher percentage of clients that come in to eat. So typically, a McDonald's might see 78% of their clients go through the drive-through, whereas we see closer, you know, pre-pandemic, probably 50 to 60. So we have a lot more clients that need to come in, and so we need that additional parking. That parking in the rear, those 12 spaces, you know, there's a drive aisle associated with that, so that's a lot of cost. So that's not something that we do lightly. We just know with experience, we need to be in that 70 to 75 parking range in order to keep the restaurant full. So that's where we're at with that one is. I used to do work for CVS Pharmacy, and their whole philosophy was they wanted to have this big parking lot that looked empty so people would come in and think that they could get right to the front. That's not what we're doing here. We need this because we need to have it so we can fill the restaurant up.
How many seats are there in the inn restaurant itself?
I believe 99, or no, it's a little bit higher now.
It's 101 seats, 30 or table tops.
That's almost one parking space for.
So we have 18 staff.
Straightforward is a parking space for, you know, one seat, so.
So we have 18 staff, whereas again, I think the Freddy's Restaurant, I talked to someone, they only have like four or five. So we've got a lot more staff. Typically, staff would park farther away from the restaurant because, you know, the turnover, so the clients can get in quicker. So I would anticipate that that's probably where staff would be parking out there, so you're not going to get a lot of turnover and cars going in and out. Our hours are.
Is that 10 to 11?
10 to 10, 10 to 11, right in there. So again, you're not going to have the morning traffic or anything like that. So we see, history has said that we need these spaces to be successful. Otherwise, we wouldn't be paying for them. And the reason you see that overhang is there's a little bit of miscommunication on the purchase agreement as to the dimension of the lot. And then it turned out that in order for that parcel to have a remainder outlot, it needs to be a minimum of 100 feet wide. And so the seller said, okay, well, I have to have 100 feet, and I can give you that easement so you can have the parking you need. So that's kind of how that shook out normally. That would be the case, and we would just have that property to include the parking spaces. Did that answer that question?
Tony?
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. I think we can probably then start the site plan.
All right, so in sections 18.06 of the zoning ordinance, we have a number of standards that must be found to be satisfied by the Planning Commission in order to approve the site plan. So we'll walk through those. At some point, Mr. Chairman will have to open it up for public comments, and this is a public hearing, so we'll get an hour.
Yeah, let's, let's go through the A through F, and then we'll open it up to the public.
So with respect to the site plan, 18.06, first section A, the uses proposed will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare. Uses and structures located on the site shall be planned to take into account the property size of the property, et cetera. So the site is obviously a vacant lot, it's been that way for quite a while. The surrounding land use pattern is commercial, including several fast food restaurants and retailers. There is some residential development to the north. So one of the items that we have in here is that the Planning Commission should ensure that the site is adequately buffered from these residences to the north. And assuming that there are not going to be any detrimental impacts to those residences, you know, with respect to how it lines up with everything on Main Street, I don't see issues there, so I would think that that standard is met. Item B, safe, convenient, uncongested, and well-defined vehicular and pedestrian circulation shall be provided for impressive egress points within the site. So they've proposed a one point of ingress and egress to the, to the site from First Street. And then they are, which I'm happy to see, I'm sure I'm not appreciative to, they are also, they have access to Main Street only through the Jimmy John's property to the east, which then attaches to the property, I'm sorry, to the west. So the, so the site crosses Jimmy John's, and there's a driveway to the parcel west of that. So there's not any new driveways on Main Street, which is good to see because, one, I'm not, might not allow many ways, and two, it helps us reduce the number of conflict points you have on Main Street. Other, other things that we noted here is that they have shown, so there's a sidewalk along the site, and then they have also shown a crosswalk connecting the building to West Main Street, which Planning Commission has requested with a bunch of previous retail-type applications. So there's a place for pedestrians to safely walk in a marked area across that front parking lot and to get into the building. Item C, the arrangement of public or private vehicular and pedestrian connections to existing and planned streets in the area shall be planned to provide a safe and efficient circulation system for traffic within the city. As I mentioned, there's one curb cut on First Street, which is, which meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance in terms of its location. And then the second one crosses the Jimmy John's sites. So we do expect that to support efficient and safe traffic circulation on West Main. Is there some sort of cross-access agreement in place, or is there a longstanding agreement in place for that?
There's been an agreement that's been negotiated in my sign, if we purchased the lot.
Okay. So as a condition of approval done, the Planning Commission can ask for a copy of that. That'll be important to have in place. Item D, removal or alteration of significant natural features shall be restricted to those areas which are reasonably necessary to develop the site in accordance with the requirement of zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission requires approved landscaping buffers and premium belt to help it continuously maintained to ensure that proposed uses will be adequately buffered from one another and surrounding public private property. So obviously, there aren't any significant natural features on the site, because it's just an open lawn area right now. The landscaping, we would include the requirement that all landscaping be continuously maintained as a condition of approval. Then the last standard E is that, I'm sorry, second to last standard E is that such factory assurance shall be provided that the requirements of all other applicable ordinance's closing requirements would be met, which would also be addressed as a condition of approval. Kind of F, the general purposes and spirit of this ordinance and the comprehensive plan of the city shall be retained. So with respect to the zoning ordinance, the C3 district is intended to accommodate auto-oriented uses in buildings that are not necessarily characteristic of the downtown. So again, auto-oriented commercial is kind of what this district asks for, and that's what it's getting here. And then with respect to the master plan, it's in the mixed-use future land use category, and that's intended to permit a mixture of residential office and commercial uses, but not necessarily any downtown style building. So this envision's mixed-use areas is oriented towards pedestrian travel. And so while this, you know, is still to a larger degree an auto-oriented use, we do note that there is a receiving slash patio area, there's a sidewalk connection to the, to the building and to the sidewalk on Main Street, which is helpful. So there is a decent combination made for both pedestrians and vehicles.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions before I ask the public for thoughts? Seeing none, is there any, any comments by the general public? Anybody would like to come on up and speak? Okay. Then Commissioners, do I have a motion to accept the site plan review standards A through F as, as we talked about?
I'll have a motion to accept.
And support?
Support.
And discussion? Still like to come back to that idea of the, we want to make sure that we have the neighbors on Sibley Street adequately protected. Now, having realized that there's 90 feet in between the property line, and there's 30 feet in between that, so you're looking at over 100 feet total. And the possibility that another building could go behind that. I, I guess I'm okay with it at this point, but I'm opening up that discussion if anybody has any other thoughts.
They probably could put something else behind it anyway, so.
I would think. It would seem logical.
Put a buffer behind that one, right? I don't think the fences, I think it'd be nice or.
Yeah.
Paying just landscaping.
I tend to agree at this point. The rural area that needs it is right behind the houses. I mean, that's the, so the next person that comes in here is going to face that, which we've done with anybody else. I mean, it's, you know, that's been fairly consistent. So, okay. So any other discussion on the site plan review standards A through F? It's been moved and sacked. Sue, voice vote, please.
Commissioner Ken Waldner?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kadula?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes.
Andy, Special Land Use Review Standards?
Yep, so similar to the previous standards in Section 1703 of the zoning ordinance for all special land uses, there are also standards there that the Planning Commission must find or met in order to approve a special land use. Standard A, the proposed special land use shall be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained so as to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the vicinity, and the use will not change the essential character of the area which is proposed. So as we noted earlier, this is a largely commercial area with several drive-through restaurants in that area. In terms of its appearance and operation, we think it'll be substantially similar to other establishments in the, in the area. Building materials weren't submitted, nor renovations, but I think we all know what a Culvers looks like, and so I think we'll get something very similar to that. You guys can certainly ask for those if you want to see, you know, what it would look like to confirm that, but it's not a serious concern of mine. And then, you know, we also have a noting here just talking about the, you know, the proximity of that with respect to those R2 residential properties to the north. Again, it sounds like you kind of worked through that already with those observations that we made, and that you can certainly require a buffer or something along the northern part of this development to protect those uses. But as you mentioned, it's certainly possible that it could be developed in the future, and you could impose that on the next individual who would actually buy out right against those properties. Item B, the proposed special land use shall be generally consistent with the City of Lowell master plan, which we believe it is. We discussed that a minute ago. Item C, the proposed special land use shall be served adequately by central public facilities and services such as highway, streets, police, fire, drainage structures, et cetera. So the site is served by water and sewer. Stormwater drainage is proposed through catch basins and a connection to a detention basin on the adjacent property. We did receive stormwater calculations, and the city has a process that's working through account to review those to make sure they're adequate. The city engineer and the DPW director take a fairly active role in reviewing drainage and utility connections and things like that. Similarly, the Lowell area, fire department would have any comments on emergency access. However, the site looks to be plenty accessible to me as a, as a layperson in that respect. And again, those would all be handled after, you know, if it's approved and subsequent to that, there's a process that the city makes sure each department gets a, gets a look at it to make sure any concerns are addressed. Item D, the proposed special land use should not create excessive additional requirements at public cost for public facilities and services. We don't expect that to be the case. There are already several restaurants with drive-throughs in the area. An additional one will be generally similar to the character of the area now and not create any additional, you know, excessive requirements for public cost for public facilities and services. Item E, this proposed special land use shall not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, equipment. It would be detrimental to persons' property or the general welfare by excessive production of noise, traffic, smoke, fumes, et cetera. Again, we don't think that this is going to cause any excessive detrimental conditions. Certainly, there will be an increase of traffic in this general area as both of this and the adjacent Jimmy John's Restaurant open up. But I think they've done a good job of, you know, negotiating the shared access arrangement so that there's not additional curb fence on Main Street and the location on, the driveway on First Street, I think is in a good spot. It's far enough away from the location, and I think it's making a relatively safe arrangement for pedestrians insofar as it's practical. And, you know, generally speaking, we think that it aligns with, with other uses that are in, in the vicinity. Then item F, it shall comply with applicable federal state of local requirements and copies of all. Such permits shall be submitted to the city, which would be addressed as a condition of approval. And those are the six general standards for special land uses. We have one more list of specific uses for drive-throughs, and we'll hit to it in a minute.
Okay. Thanks, Andy. This is the Special Land Use Review for Standards. Commissioners, any, any questions or thoughts before we again ask the general public? Seeing none, is there any comments from the general public? Then do I have a motion to accept the Special Land Use Review Standards A through F?
Motion to accept.
And second?
Second.
And discussion? Seeing no discussion, Sue, voice vote, please.
Commissioner Ken Waldner?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kadula?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes.
Thank you. Our next one is restaurants with drive-through facilities, Special Land Use standards, and this one only goes A through B.
Yep, so in this case, in addition to the above standards that we just went through, the zoning ordinance also contains standards that apply to specific uses. And so this one is for restaurants with drive-through facilities. So the first one requires that there be 10 stacking spaces for drive-through service, which will be the intent here is that if someone has a drive-through, that we don't have cars backing out into the street going to get into the drive-through service. And the site is, is really well-designed in that respect, there are 15 stacking spaces there, and they have what looks like. there, and they have what looks like one of the double ordering situations, so that should hopefully get people through the line a little bit quicker than... In addition to those, at least three parking spaces shall be provided in close proximity to the exit of the drive-through portion to allow customers waiting on their orders. And this is part of typical culvers arrangements, you don't get your food out the window, but you get a little sticker, or it used to be a little plastic thing, then you pull forward and you sit there for maybe three, four minutes, and they bring the food out to you. So they've already got that built into their, into their overall site and model for how they do the drive-through component to it, so that's been satisfied. C, public access to the site shall be fifty feet from any intersection as measured from the freeway line. They have satisfied that standard with both the First Street and the Main Street intersections. Item D, parking and maneuvering areas of the site shall be fenced or screened from the view of any flooding residential district or used by a decorative fencing wall or an escape equivalent. So this kind of gets to the conversation you were having earlier, so there's technically not enough flooding residential district. That's an important observation here. Because you have an additional parcel to the north that has a hundred feet of width, there is not a directly adjacent residential zoning district or a residential use. Certainly, you could, as, you know, we talked about, require something there, but it's not required by the ordinance here. Then item E, outdoor speakers for the drive-through shall be located in a way that minimizes some transmission towards neighboring property and uses. So the drive-through is kind of on the northern, north side of the building, and, you know, certainly, the, there is some potential, I guess, for that sound to carry towards the north side. I don't know how far that would carry, but without anything there, you know, I guess it's possible that you could have some, some, just hearing the general noise and back and forth into the customers and employees at the drive-through speaker, it could be some sound issues for properties to the north. But again, you've got about a hundred feet there, a little more actually, it does point at only a hundred and twenty feet between the property and, and the drive-through area. So that would be the only thing, I think, for discussion here.
Steve, or Gary, or Mr. Cole, is it?
Yeah.
Do any of you have any idea how far the sound travels?
I mean, they can't really tell you how far it traveled, but what I could tell you is when you look at the, there are two order engines that are located right next to each other, and so when you think about it, you can't believe it's so loud that the other person isn't even hearing it. And so, you know, I would think that with a hundred and thirty feet back, that, you know, it really shouldn't be something that they hear a lot of. You have Cascade, who probably got about, were as close as fifty feet to the cameras behind us. Have we got heard any complaints on that?
I did have another municipality where they made us do a big study, and granted, it's been three years, I've had a couple of years since then, so my recollection's not a hundred percent, but I remember the big heartbeat, I remember the vehicle sits in front of the speaker, so that helps deaden. And then plus the new technology they have, I remember being something like just thirty or forty feet, it was very minimal.
Commissioners, are there any questions on the restaurant with drive-through facilities, special land use standards? And again, I'll ask the general public, is there any consideration, anything anybody wants to say? Having seen that, or not seen that, any? Do I have a motion to accept the restaurants with drive-through facility, special land use standards, A through E?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
Make the second.
And discussion? Seeing none, Sue, would you do a voice vote, please?
Commissioner Cadwalader?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kadula?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes.
On the recommendations.
So we have recommended approval of the site plan special land use on the final page of our staff report. There are nine proposed conditions. So just to walk through these real quick, the first four are really the conditions we put on everything, so they have to pay the fees, comply with requirements of fire department, DPW engineer, MDOT, et cetera, continual compliance with applicable codes, ordinances, et cetera. Special land use shall comply with somewhat requirements, and copies of permits shall be submitted to the city. Five, subject properties shall be split from the apparent parcel as shown on the site plan, approved of the split shall be submitted to the city. Now, has this already happened? Has this been divided yet, do you know? I know we looked at it at staff level a couple of months ago, just as far as a parcel geometry goes.
It's been approved as long as we purchased the property.
Okay. So then, once that's, once that's completed, then just a copy of it or to the city. Number six, I think we can strike. So this, so this one says, yes, can shelter location on the drive-through with a hundred feet of subject property on site plan. I don't think we can see that at this point, we're all pretty familiar with the site, so I would suggest that we remove item six. Item seven was exterior lighting I talked about. Eight was the shared access agreement with adjacent property to the west or properties to the west, which we had talked about. And then nine, landscaping buffers and reenveloped shall be continuously maintained to ensure that reported uses will be adequately buffered from another install in private property. So with that one adjustment, unless you want to add additional conditions to the approval, there would be eight total conditions.
Commissioners? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing at this point. And do I have a motion to accept the special land use of site plan reviews along with the eight conditions? Right, right. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just one point of clarification on, except the one about the foot candles. I think we had mentioned that we are a little bit over, it was next to the neighbors.
Next to the...
The recommendation that wasn't an issue. Yeah. So I was wondering, do we strike that one too, or is that a bone of contention for the commission?
I don't have any, so I would be fine with striking that one because...
Our ordinance, however, says exterior lighting shall not exceed zero point five candles, so I'm not sure that we need to strike it necessarily.
If it's a permitted or special use in the district, which it is, if it will undertake reasonable measures to assure that the public health, safety, and welfare would not be undermined, if the proposed plan includes reasonable measures to mitigate clear and lanes intrusion or distraction, and four, if the general public benefit from the proposed lighting, and the proposed lighting and related land use are consistent with the city's master plan. So you can approve the lighting as it's proposed, or you can keep that condition in there, and they would have to make a display adjustment to their lighting plan on that west side.
But I'm keeping it in there, can we not also say that with the exception of being pointed at Jimmy John's?
Only, only to Jimmy John's, so it's...
The west.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, to the west, yep. That way, that way, the, it's still in there for the, all around the entire property, only that point would not be, that makes sense?
Yes. Now, this, so the point five foot candles would only apply otherwise to the northern boundary of the site, except the only other Chinese private property that there is on the south, and on the east, that's public, that's a public street, so we haven't historically applied that half a foot of handle requirement there. So, yes, we can modify this just to say that with the exception of the western block.
Just strictly from the standpoint that that's, that's the ordinance, and we have to recognize it, but we're also recognizing the exception. Gives us a reason for doing it. We've had a motion, second, and we have changed the condition there of number seven slightly.
Do I need to retract my motion, or...
I would, I would keep the motion the way it is, I would just simply say as amended.
As amended.
As amended conditions.
So I still make the motion to accept these standards with the amended number seven with the westerny private property being the exception over point five candle.
Dave, did you second it?
I can second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Sue, would you do a voice vote, please?
Commissioner Cadwalader?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kadula?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes.
Congratulations, and welcome to the floor.
Thank you very much.
Is there any staff comments still?
I'm good.
Michael?
No, really? Good.
Dave?
Good.
Colin?
Good.
Tony?
It's nice to, we see a lot of plans, it's nice to see a thorough plan. I try to look at who did it, but yeah, thank you.
It was mad.
Hmm?
It was mad.
Amanda?
I'm good here.
And I'm good here, too. Well, welcome, and do I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
And a second?
Second.
Will you stand in adjournment?